I'd like to reconvene our open session.
Who doesn't need us?
Oh, certainly. Everyone has these.
I would like to say this is the last time I can remember in my state of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a new report of closed session this evening. In closed session by a vote of four to zero with member Perry absent, the board considered options related to an employee and took action to accept resignation agreement with the employee. Like a motion to adopt our agenda for this evening, please.
Summons.
A second. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
The last vote on the agenda as presented on paper.
Aye.
Opposed, carries for one. We have some recognitions this evening. Our first recognition is for our school power endowment president, Chris Clark.
This is the least we can do to be able to shoot a game. So, words can't express, I think, the gratitude that we have for the years of service you put into this district and the support you gave to kids and our teacher and staff. But really, for me, your heart and soul is in it. And I can tell, we meet on Friday mornings, how much you love this district and how much you gave to your kids. So, again, this token gesture from me to you, but I'm gonna miss you on those mornings, but I know you'll be there for one more year, so.
One more year stepping down this crazy. It's been a pleasure serving this community, this district especially, you all, but most of all, the kids in this district who attend the public schools. What school power does, the endowment board does, it's just fulfilling to the community, the parents who volunteer their time, and it couldn't be for a better cause. This is the healthblood of our community, having strong schools. We firmly believe that and we're dedicated to it. And hopefully going forward, we'll continue to fund the schools as much as we can and as much as this community will support, which has been just amazing in the last so many years that we've been involved. So, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for letting us educate your four children.
She wants to make sure we, Chris.
And Chris's last graduating child is going to the Naval Academy.
Right?
Sounds very nice. Thanks, Chris.
And next we'd like to recognize as our partnership with Laguna Beach.
We could do it together if you'd like.
Do it together, okay.
We'll go up there. So first of all, we have the city and actually, obviously, we have repeated here. So, could you maybe introduce your staff, if you have anything?
Yeah. First, Fire Chief Mike Garcia could not make a case if he sends his regrets, he would really appreciate the partnership. And we have Cornelius Ashton, our school resources officer, and of course, of course, you know him very well, he does a great job. And then we have our police captain, Jeff Talbert. We have our fire division chief, Ed Valdez. We have Alexis Braun and Adam Bucarati, our senior recreation supervisors. And we have about 10 other people that wanted to come tonight, and I said, no, two for me. But we all really appreciate everything the school board does, we really love working with Jason and his team, and thank you for everything you've done for our community. Appreciate you having everybody here tonight.
Well, thanks for having everybody make it come. It has been, I think, a really great year. We've had a lot of different partnerships that we've been able to expand, including the adult education work that we are looking forward to this year, the school resource officer program as well. And I think for me, watching our students getting on the bus for graduation and getting an escort down to the grounds really is a great example of what the small town can do for its students. Just kids waving outside, I mean, the pictures in the Orange County Register of the kids just waving as they were getting that first round stream in. It's just a thanks to you for making that experience a reality for them. So, with that, I'll pass over Jim.
My thought is, like I say, over the many years in our community, it's imperative that we work together because we have so few spaces for kids, for the field space, for any even indoor spaces. They're limited, so it's been essential that we work together and share those spaces. And then in recent years, as safety has become such a huge issue, that the collaboration that we have so that we can assure our parents that we're prepared for any emergency, that the departments know, our campus layouts, they have all that information, they can respond immediately. And the coordination with the fire and the red flag days, it's so many things. And I don't know that the community realizes how many things that we've worked jointly on that are so important for the success of the school district and for the city to meet the needs of all of their residents. And then, the crossing guard at Thurston is another example, that was essentially an issue and another really important thing that we provide for the safety of kids. But then this year, I think, really accommodating with having the SRO, because that has just been a highlight for our schools this year, a highlight for the kids, and a highlight for Chris. He loves it, and the kids, it was really a big step forward. So, I also want to say thank you on behalf of all the members, I know they really realize how much goes into this and how it's so important to work collaboratively. So, thank you.
So, we'll invite you up one at a time, because we actually have three certificates, one for the city, so we don't want to get spitting over each one for fire. You want to go over here and do pictures or what?
Oh, you're there, please.
She's over there.
You go there, I see you.
All right.
Just like, let's make sure we go together.
Let's see if you can get it.
Photo bar, right?
I'm saying up here.
Yeah, well, this is my best.
And our fire department.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And the last thing I can say about our partnership is it continues to grow. And I've appreciated John and having an opportunity to sit down and chat regularly, we all do. And I think we look for opportunities that we can partner, and I know that we'll find more in the future that we'll be able to work together on another board meeting. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to come tonight, it means a lot. And I know the board feels the same way, so.
Thank you. And our next recognition is for Captain Fay, volunteer extraordinaire.
Absolutely.
Karen, and everything else, if you could. We just wanted to recognize that as your last one graduated.
I'm sorry.
Seven years, not one, they had everything up.
Yeah.
On the small. I am such a huge fan of volunteers, because I, when I was on the board, when we started the community service at the high school, which we had some objection to, they said we should not be forcing volunteerism on young people. And we were, one of, there were many districts that did it. Now, it's pretty broad-based that, you know, we need to teach young people that it's important to be a volunteer. Because without volunteers, we really fall flat on our faces. It's something that we really depend on, our teachers depend on it from the early ages when we go through the classroom, and all the committees and of course, PTA. And we have served PTA beyond our district and state level, so without the C. That's dear to your heart, and so you need someone who is passionate about something to inform everyone else, who's like, well, if I knew about that, I'd do something. Because you need that person to be the spark. And so, we greatly appreciate the work you've given to our district, and wanted to recognize you for that.
Well, thank you. I'm greatly appreciative of everything that the district has offered as far as opportunities to get involved and all the great volunteers I got to know over the years, so thank you.
I have just one little story. When I probably first knew Kathleen, you came, Ronald Lamont was heading up the committee, and we're looking at kindergarten reading. And you brought your two kids who weren't in school yet, and you set them up with their coloring stuff and their snacks and things, and they just worked. And I thought, I'm doing something real wrong. Because I couldn't bring my kids here and they wouldn't. But anyway, and you had so many ideas, and I remember Ronald Lamont saying, well, okay, you provided so much material, what we'll do is if they can read this booklet, then they can get into kindergarten. But really, you know, that goes back a long ways, because now they're all grown up. And then you have Tom, who is right there behind you, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say really quick, I met Kathleen in PTA 15 years ago when I had a kindergartner, and I think you were PTA president, and I walked in that meeting and said, oh, I'll volunteer, this woman is organized. So, I thank you for all the years with you, because I've learned from you and followed. If I ever had a question, I comment to be any PTA mom, email Kathleen Fay, she knows. And I did advocacy up in Sacramento with you on PTA, and that was one of the most rewarding things I did, so thank you for everything.
Yeah, I concur. You've been a voice for all kids, not just the good kids. And I appreciate that. As an educator, we speak for all kids, and you've done that for years and years. Your voice will be missed as ledge action, I know that there'll be somebody there that will try to step in your role, but you set the bar very, very high for the person following you. So, much appreciation for everything you've done for our students, and you're in for help, as well as your husband, who's standing with a video. So, he also has been a major part of our students' lives.
He's a big volunteer also.
Yes, he is. So, thank you to you as well.
Hi, Kathleen, I'm gonna selfishly say that, because I can do know everything they said, thank you for all the work you also put into all of the band, the state that we have, the program we have, I don't know what it's gonna look like.
Well, I'm still up. Thank you.
Can we give her a quick hug?
You can cut to the picture.
Thank you all. Our next agenda item is public comment on non-agenda items. We have Beau Bianchi.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, first board meeting, so I don't have any idea what I'm doing, what I'm saying, but bear with me. But I'm here actually just to talk a little bit about Laguna Beach volleyball, the future of the program. How much time do you want to get this being? Twenty minutes?
Three minutes.
Yeah, two minutes and forty-six seconds.
Oh, okay, that's great. I'm a parent of a Laguna Beach High School senior, just an incoming freshman as well as a sixth grader. I'm a lifelong resident of Laguna Beach, I'm an artist, played for the artist, played volleyball for the school and beyond. And I'm pretty prideful of the sport, I've been around it my whole life, I'm still involved in it, I've coached for many, many, many years. And there used to be no greater sport in this town than Laguna, it was a community event. Our games back in the day were community events, we had spectators, not just parents sitting in the stands cheering for the kids. And in the eighties, the Laguna Beach Open volleyball was the biggest thing in the world for Laguna Beach volleyball, and at that same time, so was the high school. We were one of the best programs in the country and had the best coaching in the country. And I don't think there's any other sport that has had more Division One athletes, more national players, more Olympians than Laguna Beach volleyball. And I think it's lost its way a little bit over the years, and there's a lot of reasons for that. You know, the parent group that we have right now is outstanding, and they're very dedicated, led by Celeste Killis, who's fantastic. And we all want this program to succeed and get back to where it was, and get the kids out in the community and help push and create awareness for the program. And right now, I think you guys are making a decision to really shake that program, and that's hiring our next volleyball coach. So, I'm here actually to speak for Lance Stewart, who I know has his application in. And I know many of you know Lance and the reason why that he may not be considered for the job, but I think we have to look at him as a whole. He's from Laguna Beach artist, one of the top players, player of the year back in the day, coached, he's been coaching his whole life as well. And he's prideful of this town, this amazing place, and he's prideful of its successes, he's prideful of Laguna Beach, and he would be, I don't think you can find a better applicant for that position, hands down. I mean, I know we've had coaches here and there, Lance would probably still be here if that incident didn't happen. He's someone that wants to be here long-term, he wants to see the growth of Laguna Beach volleyball, he's the one that knows how to do it, he's won several national championships. I had the pleasure of playing for him. When I heard he was up for the job, I spoke to many younger players that played for him, older players that played for him, and not one of them had one disparity word to say as a coach. So, I have three minutes. Okay, wow. Anyways, he is no doubt the best applicant, like I said, I'm very involved in the coaching world, still now with my son. I know the coaching pool, I know there's nothing out there, there's gonna be no better person for this job. And I think we have the time, we're going to make a decision to have someone here to assist in this program, bring it back, we'll be prideful, we'll be here for a while, have dedication to the program. And my understanding too is if John Patchell wants him to assist with the girl's program, look down the screen.
Sorry, Beau, I have to cut you off. I appreciate your passion for the topic and.
Well, it's something that I'm very prideful of, having a senior coming to the school.
I understand that, and I, you probably don't, but I remember when I was subbing at Thurston.
I remember this guy.
So, I know, you know, and I know what you said, but I. Can I clarify with the board this out, can you direct? You know, the board doesn't do direct hiring, I mean, that goes through the department.
Okay.
So, we appreciate your input, that we're not that bad.
Okay, well, I understand that the board still has.
We approve all the hirings, but we, the only person.
So, if you don't approve, you have final say on who gets hired with this.
Well.
Well, I understand in everyone else, I mean, I just want to make sure. Appreciate it.
Right, I understand. But I just want to make sure you knew that, that we're not, like, we don't do the interviewing.
I understand that.
Okay.
I know, I know Lance over the years and all that stuff, so I do understand that, but it does come down to final approval. I hope that is true. All right?
Thank you, thanks, Beau. Monsieur Mondo.
I'm speaking tonight, first of all, I appreciate having your attention, Ms. Bickers, thank you. I'm speaking tonight in rebuttal to Ms. Wolf's letter to the editor. Peggy Wolf, in today's student, Peggy Wolf needs more of what she calls trainings about the use and abuse of government secrecy protocols. Her defense of her vote to silence an elected board member proves she acted out of ignorance and based on bad legal advice. First, she cites Board Bylaw 9011 prohibiting disclosure of confidential information. But Bylaw 9011 nearly mimics California Code Section 54963, which is the state law that supersedes Bylaw 9011. What she failed to learn in her trainings is that only information that is sourced exclusively in a closed meeting and meets legal criteria for secrecy is confidential. The board and superintendent, and certainly not a hired lawyer, do not determine what meets the legal standards for confidentiality, the law does. And if there is a difference of opinion, a judge decides. Wolf then states that the purpose of confidentiality under Bylaw 9011 is to prevent school district liability. That's dead wrong. Liability and litigation is just one of several reasons to close a meeting, most have nothing to do with liability or litigation. Next, Wolf misleadingly states that when communications about board members, board business members, or about board business, members are required to use their official district's applied email accounts. She cites not Bylaw 9012. She even asserts under no circumstances a member to conduct official business through personal email, wrong again. Consistent with the California Public Records Act, Bylaw 9012 provides, quote, "To the extent possible, electronic communications regarding any district-related business shall be transmitted through a district-provided device or account," unquote. What this means is that the use of personal devices is allowed by Bylaw 9012, but if it creates a public record, it is releasable unless exempted from release. That again is a matter of state law, not local power. And if there is a dispute or disagreement, only a judge can interpret and apply the law. If the board followed the law, it would go through the courts for an injunction or refer the matter to the district attorney for investigation. Since that might have led to vindication of Perry and possible legal problems for other board members or the superintendent, the board, including Wolf, decided to be judge and jury using political power, not legal authority. Soon, the board lawyer's April 17 email is going to become public, and soon it will be known to anyone who wants to know. That the Public Records Act request Wolf referred to produced a probe of emails that show other board members used official and private emails in a far more political way than Perry. Perry is not the only board member who transferred official emails back and forth between official and private emails. Wolf's accusation that she used any information improperly, first conjecture and speculation for which she has no proof, shame on you.
Yeah, if you can produce this glossy.
You have a general and a specific comment.
If you can produce this glossy, God knows how much, how come you can't spend $15,000 and get these meetings recorded?
Well, that's a bit segue for me, thank you. So, this evening, you are approving some salary increases and other upgrade increases.
This is that you listed two things down here.
Yes, this is the general comment.
Okay, yeah.
So, you are approving some salary increases this evening as well as some other compensation increases, looks like pretty sizable amounts. And also noted, just in a brief review, that the property taxes are expected to increase by 4.7% 2019, 2020. So, that's okay, there's a lot more money coming from the school districts coffers. So, on the segue with respect to adding transparency and sunshine to all the proceedings here, I encourage you to make a priority to start live taping again with the necessary ADA compliance videos that you're required to do, that'll cost you $15,000, I think that that needs to be prior, and I urge, please do that. The rest I'll kick out on a later time, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments, did not turn a card in on non-agenda items? So, we have reports this evening from the Lupa or Sarah.
Yes, we did have our elections a couple of weeks ago, just before the last one at school. And we had 109 members vote, we had 106 guesses, three noes, so we obviously passed and ratified our contact, so.
Thank you. Margaret, CSE.
Thank you. Well, CSE had a great year-end, and I reported our election results, and I was told to clarify that we actually had three scholarship winners, two from Laguna Beach High School and one from outside, because I spoke wrongly on that. But the other thing I would really like to say is, I would like to thank everyone involved in the current and continuing professional development that is going to happen over the summer. We have, I just wrote down, a fun-filled educational summer of professional development, because many of these things are consciousness bias training, things that I don't think other school districts are really offering to their staff and their classified and certificate staff. Certainly, there are some programs that are more geared towards certified. And as we move forward, once school gets back, that we're back a week early, there is four filled days of professional development for classified staff, along with working with the teachers that they may be associated in work environments. So, I want to thank everyone for that, because that's inclusive of all of us that are part of the LUSD, us, thank you.
Board members. Kelly.
I'm just attending the fifth grade promotions, middle school promotion and graduation.
Excellent.
Talk about that's what they end or?
That was one, yes.
Yeah.
Sure, because the change in the end, the last thing is to change.
Okay. Yes, I agree, because we're all wonderful. And I could see TOW's kindergarten, oh, for Russian, and it reminded me of my last one nine years ago, parents were all so excited, and then same teacher comes up and says, and this was the class of 331, and no. So, but they're all.
No community question. No community question. I just would like to take this, to end this category.
Would you ask the audience, can they hear us?
Can you hear, all right? Yes. Turn your solder.
No, no, it was for you.
For me, okay. You can't hear me. Well, speak up, I know, I don't speak, I hear that. Just wanted to appreciate all the work that was done on the barbecue, that is something that's become a tradition, and our staff not only deserves it, but they greatly appreciate it, and they have a nice time of spending time together when they culminated the year and night. I know there's a lot of work that goes into preparing it, and there's a lot of work that goes into doing all the cooking while it's going on, so. And I think even that part really, I think, sends such a nice message to staff that you guys are out there doing that for them, it's not just holding on a cart. And as with the others, I think the promotions and the graduation certainly celebrate our students, and I just am impressed with what really nice young people we have. We're really fortunate, I think, in this community, and I think that I, we owe it in part to our staff members at the school sites who have nurtured that in our students. And I noticed, one thing I noticed, like with the eighth graders, they, they're making eye contact when they come through. You can tell by the way they're moving or that they're nervous, that's a nervous thing for them, with that whole auditorium full of people. But they still, they know that, they know that they need to do that, and that tells what we pick into the small details. Maybe that doesn't, those kind of things, I notice, I notice that with the high school graduation too, that they really feel that it's not just per country for most of them, I mean, some of them it is, they just want to get off that stage, but they really do realize that it's, they're finished, you know. Probably met, maybe it's because a lot of our kids go to school the entire time here, and we may have more in that than other communities, and it's small, and they really know each other. But they also, at the high, and I've taken a lot of time, but the high school graduation, they celebrate each other, and that's, I think, we're really, if we've nurtured that in them, then we've given them a gift beyond their academic learning, and I just think that will serve them well. And then I also just need to, I said it to Ann Karen, but the publication was outstanding, and the personal messages in it were, I think, remarkable. And so, I'm just greatly appreciative for that, what do we call it, I don't have the right angle or.
Annual report.
Annual report, thank you. It was terrific. That's all. Dr. Valori.
Just a special thanks again to Sarah and Margaret for, one, coming to the meetings regularly and supporting the work that's going on in the district, and we have a great partnership, and, you know, at the end of the year, it's kind of a mad dash to leave, and we don't always get to thank everybody for all their work. But I really do appreciate everything that you guys bring to the table in our communication and partnership. Ditto related to all of the different things you all mentioned related to our promotions and graduations. Probably one of the best graduation speeches I think I've ever heard from a staff member was the one Don Honeycutt provided to the audience. And, you know, the students were riveted at the things that she was saying, and it was, anybody had a chance to see the Orange County Register, I think there's a picture of Dr. Rollman laughing during her speech, I think she cut us on a roller coaster ride. So, again, just a testament to the amazing people that we have that work for us, day in, day out, and what they do when we have students. I gotta thank the board for what I believe was a great school year, and like, and our staff for all their hard work and the barbecue, and as we wrap up the end of the year, there's a lot of things that go on, a lot of moving parts, and it went off without a hitch, so much appreciation to all, all staff.
Thank you. We have three public hearings this evening. Our first public hearing is public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AD 1200. Do I need to read all the government codes? I should. I can, I'll turn this on.
You've got the first one.
Okay, I'll start with that. I'll start with. Public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AD 1200, Chapter 1, 1213-1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title V, Section 15449. And 2019, 2020 negotiated agreement with California School and. negotiated agreement with California School Employees Association, C S C A, and it's Laguna Beach, chapter number one, three, one. And to open the public hearing, this is time for a public comment. See none of those public hearing. And open public hearing, public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B twelve hundred, chapter one, two, one, three, dash, nineteen ninety-one, government code three, five, four, seven point five, and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine, and twenty nineteen, twenty, negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association, LaLupa. Is any public comment on this public hearing? So now close the public hearing. Public hearing on public disclosure of proposal in accordance with A B twelve hundred, chapter one, two, one, three, dash, slash, nineteen ninety-one, government code three, five, four, seven point five, and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine, and twenty nineteen, twenty, proposal with non-represented classified and certificate employees. Is any comment on this public hearing? No, see none, close that public hearing. Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. Are there any items board members would like to pull off the consent calendar? If I had a comment I would like to make on June eleventh, minutes twenty, pull it off. Yeah, I am addition, so I should pull it off. And I'd like a motion to approve consent calendar items B to K.
It's been moved.
Second. Any public comment on the consent calendar? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four oh one. I'd like a motion, please, for approval of the minutes of June eleventh, twenty nineteen. Second. Any public comment on these minutes? What I was asking for, I'm sorry, maybe. I didn't, I wanted to ask if it was appropriate, that with what we had later in that meeting, another resolution, but because of some rather significant misunderstandings in the community, that to make it clear that Member Perry was, did not arrive for closed session by choice, that she was not excluded from closed session. And I wanted to add that language when it says on page sixty-seven, Member Perry was not present for closed session, that it would indicate that for the record. And that was my request to add that. It's fine. So all, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, carries four oh one. We have no information items this evening. Our first action item is approval of local control and accountability plan, L cap, and the annual update, and is Dr. Winkler.
Well, yeah, yeah. So we did not receive any feedback from the public hearing the last presentation. So we're submitting the control and accountability plan for board approval tonight, so we can submit it to the county office for their approval.
Any public input on this item? Any more questions? Motion, please, second. We get the second, thank you. Carol, any discussion? I sent you through our presentation the last time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four oh one. Action item fifteen, approval final twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, all funds budget.
And we're very similar to the L cap. Of course, we didn't receive any feedback. I would like to point out one slight change to the budget document from our show that public hearing, it has the one that said they're ending for balance. We have a sign out pending board's approval, the changes to the competitive package for each department unit.
So any public comment on this item? Any more questions? Motion, please?
It's been moved.
A second. Any discussion?
I want to thank Jason for making sure it's aligned to our district goals and visions, and thank Jeff and all of the staff for making something so straightforward to the glossary terms, and and it's a readable document. So thank you for, it seems that you step up every time, and I appreciate your staff and all the work they do.
I agree with Carol's comments, and I I find this invaluable for my understanding and knowledge about finance and history.
I particularly like the charts.
The charts.
Do one every time.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries four oh one. Action item sixteen, approval resolution nineteen dash oh three, resolution of the Board of Education acting as the legislating body of Community Facilities District number ninety-eight dash one of the Laguna Beach Unified School District authorizing the levy of special taxes within Community Facilities District number ninety-eight dash one for fiscal year nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty. Yes, roll it again.
This is our annual resolution that allows us to let me the special taxes related to our community facilities district to come back to two thousand, two thousand and one. And if you know no further, I'm going to go on to the two thousand fifty one per the board's, per the, that is in this public hearing.
Public comment on this item? Any more questions?
Can you say those dates again, do enough further than?
Two thousand fifty, fifty one.
You can say fifty, I thought you said fifty and this is more.
No, fifty and fifty one, and I'll show up in the report that David Costin and associates provides us about this as well.
Any other questions? Motion, please?
It's been moved.
A second. Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, oh, both of us, thank you.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Normedin?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes.
Action item seventeen, approval ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B twelve hundred, chapter one, two, one, three, slash, nineteen ninety-one, government code three, five, four, seven point five, and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine, and the twenty nineteen, twenty, negotiated agreement with the California Schools and Boys Association, C S C A, and it's Laguna Beach, chapter number one, three, one.
Please say. Thank you. So we're pleased to present to you tonight for ratification our collective bargaining agreement that we negotiated with C S C A using a collaborative interest-based bargaining process. We're very pleased with the outcome, and we appreciate C S C A's cooperation in the negotiation process.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion, please?
It's been moved.
Second. Discussion.
I just want to thank everyone involved in this. I've watched it since I came on, and I was just very impressed with the process and how well we work together, and good for you all.
Do you think so? Right, I agree, and it's a lot of work, and there's a lot of good on both sides. And it's all in the best interest of of our employees who recognize that the hard work on most. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries four oh one. Action item eighteen, approval ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with A B twelve hundred, chapter one, two, one, three, slash, nineteen ninety-one, government code three, five, four, seven point five, and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine, and the twenty nineteen, twenty, negotiated agreement with Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association, LaLupa.
Thank you. So similarly, we're presenting our negotiated agreement with LaLupa, also using a collaborative interest-based bargaining process, and we're also very appreciative of the work that they presented to the process as well.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion?
It's been moved.
Second. Discussion.
I want to thank everyone in the negotiation process again, so I'm sure all the, and all the people that you represent, all the communication that you do out to get to these very balanced contracts. It really, it really shows, and we actually enjoy the process now. Before, I think sometimes it's over my head, or I was a little fearful. I really enjoy the process and and learning what's important in making a difference in lives and all of our members' lives. Makes a great.
Thank you, thank you. Same comments, and maybe far appreciate all the work. And I really glad we made the step to interest-based bargaining. And with the facilitation, I think it really, it really opened it up for everyone, and it seems as comfortable as that process can be, it's more than it was before. So we have a vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, carries four oh one. Action item nineteen, approval ratification of proposal in accordance with A B twelve hundred, chapter one, two, one, three, slash, nineteen ninety-one, government code three, five, four, seven point five, and C C R title five, section one, five, four, four, nine, and twenty nineteen, twenty, proposal with non-represented classified and certificate employees.
Thank you. So this isn't a negotiated agreement, it's a proposal. For your consideration, we have twenty-seven unrepresented management confidential classified and certified employees, and this would include the same terms of compensation for our, for those employees as we negotiate with the other groups.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion?
It's been moved.
Second. Discussion.
I'm sorry, it couldn't be more. I know that our superintendent, out of twenty-two cities in the county, I think he's ranked eighteenth, so I hope this moves him up a little bit more.
This is, this is not, this is not the superintendent's.
Oh, that's because it's all, it's everyone else.
This is everyone else, yeah. But your thoughts still remain.
Yes. Yeah, I wanted to finish the, I don't know where the two of you rank with your colleagues.
I'm not, yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate when we're in the same negotiations that that you're really reminding us of the script as well, and what they give us as school psychologists and everyone else, and keeping them on, so I appreciate that you're really responding to that. So it's not a aha, right? And then Jeff, you're taking us on target financially, but we should.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries four oh one. Action item twenty, agreement with Carbalda Law Group for legal counsel for twenty nineteen, twenty with a not-to-exceed amount, amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Dr. Valoria.
This is the firm that we utilize primarily for our special education file for consultation, and as well as some just general counsel work, typically related to any kind of student service work. So we're bringing it forward for next year, for your consideration.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion, please?
It's been moved.
A second. Any discussion?
I just hope it's been, not to, it's not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Oh, well, you're saying, you know, I mean.
Me too.
And I would just like to comment again, as, or so emphasize it, primarily of this, it looks like about ninety thousand is really directed towards special services, which is a really, it's a costly category for us, and it's really important to address, and that we, as we serve those students with special needs. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries four oh one. Item twenty-one, approval agreement with law firm of Fagan, Friedman, and Holt Frost for general legal services to Laguna Beach Unified School District's constructional services office with a not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand. Dr. Valoria.
Again, this is just a retainer for a law firm that we utilize occasionally. I think this year, we built maybe five hundred dollars, um, about a thousand, yeah, about a thousand dollars to this firm, just for, you know, having other firm for questions as things arise for student services and related situations. And again, as I've mentioned in the past, having multiple law firms available to us provides us an opportunity to ensure that we're finding people who are available to service our needs at that time.
Thank you. Public comment? Any more questions?
Would we use the same contract if we needed to use them for one of the other things they're available for as well?
They do all the general counsel, that it's, it's catch-all, yes.
Motion, please?
Oh, so moved, sorry.
A second. Any discussion? I just say again, these are not-to-exceed amounts, so we get it on on the books, we budget allocate for it, and then use it, it's Google leaf, I would say.
Poked enough, yeah.
Right, but it's good to have good lawyers behind you.
Right, definitely. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries four oh one. Action item twenty-two, approval amended contract agreements for Assistant Superintendent Business Services and Assistant Superintendent Human Resources and Public Communications. Dr. Valoria.
I bring for you contracts, extensions for both business services and Human Resources Public Communications for your review and approval and for your consideration today.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I noticed you have the wrong pronoun gender on page one seventy, page two of three of Jeff's. It has her.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Well.
Just tells you I was really reading.
You were really.
I was, I was like, I swear. Do you see it?
Nice catch.
I can't even find it.
I just want to sniff that.
Because I thought I was reading.
Any other discussion? All, all those in favor? Aye, carries four oh one. Action item twenty-three, approval employment cut.
There's, there's a script that goes along with that.
With item twenty-two or?
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Oh, so I didn't use the script? Should I go back and read this?
Yeah, for the record, I think.
For the record, okay. So we'll go back and.
On item twenty-two.
On item twenty-two. Okay, all, all of this.
Yes.
Okay. So this is the, Laguna Beach Unified School District, June twenty-fourth, regular meeting. Agenda item twenty-two, government code section five, four, nine, five, three, subdivision C three states, prior to taking final action on executive compensation, the board must orally summarize the recommendation for final action on the salary compensation and or fringe benefits that would be considered for certain executive officers of the district. For the two proposed contract amendments on this agenda item, there are, sorry. The first amendment to the contract reads Jeffrey Dixon, Assistant Superintendent Business Services. The proposed contract amendment was posted with the board agenda for this meeting. The amendment, if approved, would maintain the current terms and conditions of employment for Jeff Dixon with the following exceptions. Number one, the term of the contract would be amended to reflect the three-year term of employment from July first, twenty nineteen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Two, placement on step four of the Assistant Superintendent Certificate Management Salary Schedule beginning with an annual base salary of one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred and thirty dollars, sorry. At step five of the salary schedule for the twenty twenty-one school year, annual salary will be two hundred and four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. At step six, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, annual salary will be two hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. The proposed contract is subject to the same annual increases for earned academic degrees applied to other certificate management employees, as well as the same longevity payments in the same percentage applied to other certificate management employees. Three, the work year will increase from two hundred and forty-three days to two hundred and forty-five days. And I saw a backtracking, right, to ask, so a motion on, I needed to separate them. The contract for Jeff Dixon, so a motion for that.
It's been moved.
A second. So I asked for public comment on this.
This is just Jeff's contract, okay.
Sorry, discussion.
I'm sorry that I didn't say that. No public comment, that we did, I already asked for a motion.
We did.
Any discussion?
Am I right that the contracts can only be for three years?
Yes.
I don't just, it is another odd thing.
Technically, for the.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Carries four oh one. The second proposed action on an Assistant Superintendent contract is for an amendment to the contract of Lisa Winston, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources and Public Communications. The proposed contract amendment was also posted with the board agenda for this meeting. The amendment, if approved, would maintain the current terms and conditions of employment. The amendment, if approved, would maintain the current terms and conditions of employment for Lisa Winston with the following exceptions. One, the term of the contract will be amended to reflect a three-year term of employment from July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. It says four, but I can just, second. Next is placement on step seven in the Assistant Superintendent's Certificate Management Salary Schedule, beginning with an annual base salary of two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Step seven is the top of the Certificate Management Salary Schedule, so the contract does not include salary increases for twenty twenty-one or the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school years. Uh, next, the work year will increase from two hundred and forty-three days to two hundred and forty-five days. Is a motion approved?
Second.
Uh, any public input? Do you have any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four oh one. Now we'll move to twenty-three. Did I misprint that?
You do.
Did I misplace it? I need a lot of help. I still need a paper. So I supersede this one, right?
Yep.
And I won't read the. Act item twenty-three, this agenda item is also for the approval of an amendment to executive contract, so government code section five four nine five three subdivision C three requires an oral summary prior to adoption. This is an amendment to the contract with Superintendent Jason Beloria. It was also posted with a board agenda for this meeting. The amendment, if approved, would maintain the current terms and conditions of employment for Jason Beloria with the following exceptions. The term of the contract will be amended to reflect a three-year term of employment from July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The sup, next, the superintendent's minimum salary for the twenty nineteen, twenty school year will be two hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars, will be two hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for the twenty twenty-one school year, and will be three hundred and four thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's for a motion, please, or just?
A second.
Any, any public input? I have cards on this, but there's a lot. Is there one here?
The outside.
Michelle, Amanda, and Jennifer Zider have left the meeting, is that correct? Do we need to sweep them out?
Let's get them outside.
I think they're not. Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Back to my comment.
What are your questions?
We have a motion.
Yes, I have a motion.
We have a motion?
Yes, we have a question.
Since I'm confused. My comment was about the salary of our superintendent. I, I don't know what the increases of the other districts have been, but, but I believe that he was eighteen out of twenty-two of the school districts in this, in this county. And I just want to put that in perspective as far as with the salary, but again, I don't know where the other school districts have gone as far as with raises.
And, and what I was looking to on, uh, transparency, so he's a hundred and fifty-one in the state. So our teachers are all top.
Right.
But our superintendent is.
Towards the bottom.
Towards the bottom.
And then I got a comment on just the leadership of the district in the last few years that I've served on the board. Um, we have social emotional support for students, we're always improving and reviewing it. We have accountability in multiple systems that previously, when I was a parent, we did not. Uh, we have data collection and we're making decisions based on data and research thanks to this leadership. We also are implementing more tools for students and parents to communicate and always working on that. We are facilitating curriculum changes and curriculum support, the leadership promotes that. We've reviewed special ed and are adapting new strategies to make it more efficient and effective. We are always continuously willing to adapt and improve and for that, I'm really grateful for the leadership and for me, I think, um, it's a worthwhile investment.
I couldn't be prouder, it's good for my kid. Just the work, the leadership that you have demonstrated and the mentor that you have found.
Since you are younger than my oldest kid. I sometimes feel a little protective under the, some of the, um, attacks we've had recently. But I, um, hearing Peggy speak, I think it's imperative to note that sometimes when you take strides to make changes in an organization, you incur upset. And I think that goes with the territory when you seek to improve, uh, and it doesn't often lead, as humans are resistant to change. So when you see things that you come into an organization and, and see that there can be improvements made, we're going to let into that and I think that's, uh, it's incumbent on us as board members, since we are, we're employers, to make sure that we give the support and the recognition, so I'm appreciative of, of those comments being made, uh, because that's what I recognize, just thinking about it recently, is that taking on things like the calendar and the bell schedule and the waiting for rates and, and making recommendations and making decisions, that's what we expect you to do. And when there's criticism over who is running the district, that's, to me, that is what we expect you to do. And, um, that's not for us to do. So I, I think that's, uh, that role has been well fulfilled and I think that you've brought out, um, the best in, in people. I mean, I see the people out here, I think that there's been, we have a really good collaborative group that serves these students well and I really, really hope that the broader community recognizes that and does not get pulled down into the muck, because it's a shame for this district. I think that it's a, it's a vibrant district and a continually improving district, which is what we've asked for.
Yeah.
That's what we ask for. Anyway, that's my.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries four oh one. Have board member request for items for future meetings and board member request for information? Is there any public input on this agenda item? Okay, any board members?
The, I, as I asked earlier, I think it's going to be in the, sometime in the future concerning consultants that we have in for the, uh, governance, I think it would be important to discuss.
Um, I just, I turned in a letter to the local paper and so I just wanted to read it as part of my, um, record as a board member, so I'll just read it. I'm a member of Laguna Beach's school board, we are a five-person majority rules board. Each member has a voice and a vote, no one vote is more important than the others, each vote matters, no voice is silenced because of, because every board member can vote on every issue. As board members, each of us is a professional steward of the school district. This means we must have clear transparency on board business in public and we must respect privacy on matters that are confidential. Confidential matters concern individual students, teachers, and staff, as well as ongoing litigation. When the board addresses confidential matters, we do so in a closed, non-public session. Under our bylaws, a board member shall not disclose confidential information to a person not entitled to receive such information unless a majority of the board has authorized the disclosure, Board Bylaw nine zero one one. When board members use email to communicate about district business, we are required to use our official district-supplied email accounts, Board Bylaw nine zero one two. This allows the district to archive the communications, which ensures transparency as to public matters confidentiality, confidentiality as to non-public matters. Following these bylaws is not only a professional expectation, it's our legal and ethical obligation. Violating these provisions threatens the integrity of the board. For public information requests, the board has learned that member D Perry has directly forwarded confidential email involving attorney-client communication. The district's attorney marked the communication as confidential. The person to whom member Perry forwarded the email was not entitled to receive such information. Member Perry did not have the right to waive the attorney-client privilege as to this communication and yet, acting on her own, she breached confidentiality. If this were a one-off occurrence, I could excuse it, but it was not. As we have learned, member Perry has been consistently forwarding official email communications, including privileged communications to her private email account. Member Perry's breach of confidentiality, coupled with her systematic forwarding of official emails to her private email account, concerns me deeply. The behavior fundamentally disregards legal and ethical obligations, exposes the district to liability, and threatens the integrity of the board. This is why I supported the recommendation of the district's attorney that confidential matters now be handled by an executive subcommittee, at least for the next year, does not include a member Perry. To be clear, the purpose of my vote is not to silence member Perry, rather, I voted to protect the confidences entrusted to us concerning students, personnel, and litigation. To frame it any other way is incorrect. Our goal as the board is to work as professionals, but if we are not able to trust a fellow board member with confidential information, it is our professional duty to take reasonable steps to protect the district. We have taken those steps.
Thank you.
I think that you, um, misread a part of it, you said the district attorney instead of the district.
The districts.
District.
Districts, apostrophe, yes, thank you.
This is my hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, one, to get, um, uh, what Peggy just said, al-also, I don't think it ends with just that it needed, where our role is pretty sure responsible to the district, so to the entity of the district and we're at the highest level of that, so whatever needs to be done in order to protect the district. Um, next, because I missed the fact we weren't coming up with a comment, I did want to give a shout out to TOW and OBHS for their ERP honor roll, which was a press release, that was awesome, it's always good to have other inspectors to recognition of all the hard work you do. And Chris, we need a leader soon and so Jenny, because now he does make it sometimes competition, as you always do, but we love those. And then, um, I did want to, um, I'd like, uh, to request the board's consent and thoughts on two things. One, to create a subcommittee for, um, how we can create a subcommittee for board communication to have a voice to communicate and, um, within the Brown Act, and it gets so dicey, so, but if, if Mark, if we're all in agreement that Mark can look into how we should do that, into creating some kind of, uh, publication or something where two, where two board members get it on the committee, because I think that is what the, the state has to be too, and however that looks, so, but if, if Mark can, we'll figure out, I guess.
Reach out to Mark.
Yes, yes, yes. If any scheme is an agenda item discussion, however.
Oh, well, reach out to Mark for his opinion.
Yeah, because I don't.
Clarity.
Yeah, because I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
And then I would really like to have posted on the screens, just the rules of our meetings in the Brown Act, right, the rules we have policy, that people, when they come up like those, they can understand that, you know, it's not like we don't want to hear them or we don't want to cut them off or, but.
I agree with that.
That, that would be wonderful to just.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Have up here, yeah.
Can you do that?
And then, um.
Really, I think your comment is always repeating the structure in which we operate to reinforce it.
They just move around the room like they do in the classrooms.
Yeah.
Well, because people are new coming into the space and even people that are here all the time, they don't know and.
Yeah.
Even our boardwalks between sections, it lists what we're supposed to do or not.
Oh, that'd be nice.
No, it is here.
Oh, for us, yes, but they don't.
Yeah, we, we, we already have that.
Right, but they don't understand.
Yeah.
That's why having here. Um, and then, uh, one more thing on just confidentiality, in the state of California, if we as a board receive something that is privileged and confidential, it is only a judge's decision to deem it not privileged and confidential. And the judge doesn't even look at the privileged information, the lawyer will just present on a general topic of why it is confidential and then the judge would then read it. It is not our individual rights to determine something is or is not, uh, privileged and confidential, it comes from the attorney, just as it's not yours to, on confidentiality about students or whatever, right? Um, so I just want to make it clear that it's not, that's a judge's role to determine it's not, not our individual rights. That's it. And, and thank you. Did you forget someone?
Hearing you say that, and I know this is not for a future agenda, I must take a little liberty with that, but I, just for me, that's a, almost like a sacred commitment for confidentiality and Peggy, in reference to your statement, uh, putting the, you know, the district, but to me, it goes beyond that, because those are basically personnel items. And so you're protecting the right of that, of any person for their information to be held in confidentiality, which is really, really important. And so it's, it's, that's to me what's at the heart of it, is that we owe that to anyone, is to give them that protection, which is the law. And yet, there are, to me, there aren't interpretations, it's pretty clear.
Yes.
I was on in to follow up on something that you had asked for, uh, is that, um, that we have, um, a statement that the, that we disagreed with comments that have been made so that we wanted to clarify that it was a board, a board opinion, so I don't know what format that would take, but if we could look at bringing that forward, you know, to address that desire. And then, as far as the information, I noticed, uh, some of the, the music events, that the plaque that has the Bruce Hoppin recognition on the visual performing arts, um, they may have done it, but it's not up to date. So I don't know if they've, they've fallen off on that as far as recognizing and picking those students and they just hadn't gotten the, the little plaque things up there, but I just, yeah, ask about that. Uh, we have a special meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at eight AM, for, um, the year-end superintendent's evaluation, uh, meeting and, uh, that is, begins with an open meeting and allows public comment on, that is a closed session meeting and I just want to say ahead of time that, um, member Perry will still be on vacation, so, uh, that, that's not, she was not, she will not be, not attending due to any exclusion, she is not attending because she is on personal vacation. Uh, our next regular meeting of the board will be Tuesday, July sixteenth, uh, at six o'clock here in the boardroom. I ask a motion to adjourn.
Second. Um, Baker?
Aye.
Any comments?